Hello, Father, we come before you as the Board of Commissioners here in Weston County. I ask for guidance and direction. I know that all good things come from you, and we would also like to incorporate that in our wings, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or changes to the agenda?
So, the Mala Board asks, can I remove a Mala manager discussion? But I do have one thing that I need to ask during that time, so I'll talk to that then. Are you going to ask it now? So, they just want to know if it is okay for married couples to serve on the same board?
As two individuals?
Right. Like a husband and then the wife also serving on the same board.
It would be fine, I think.
I don't know if we want to do that discussion behind every word of that.
Wouldn't it be, just a question, I'll put, not say it would happen, but if the two talked together, that would be like two votes against.
It's not a quorum. I mean, I can talk to you directly.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care if that one's.
I mean, we just got to leave it.
Okay.
Any other additions or changes to the agenda?
What's the resolution that we did with the speed limit? You remember, call it number F, off the top of your head.
It would have been 27.
Just a brief thing on it, making it all business. And then I also have a brief comment about resolution 2024-10.
Move to approve agenda as amended.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is properly seconded to approve the agenda, if there is additions. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda.
This special appointment of Deputy Attorney, is that something?
It's, I think, just case specific. It's not long term.
So, well, in your mentions, it's just a spell on there.
Okay, you can just tell it to me.
Okay.
How dare my computer know?
It's just a two, needs another O on it.
Oh.
Do you think we'll move agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda as written.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, properly seconded, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
We have, we have a grant. It'll be an election grant, so that will come out of that, and then there are also cages for the machines, and the sheriff's department will bring the cages with the machines in at the night of the election, in that trailer.
More secure than that.
And that trailer before we can pick up the trailer has to be three quarters of the amount.
That's a lot.
He paid, so like the check has to be given from, and then it has to have ten days to clear their stuff, and then the deputies are going to pay it out. And then the cages are supposed to be delivered this week.
So, Sheriff's Deputy is going to get a cash register.
And then the night of the election, they will be sitting in the oven, and the cages are all unused ballots, and the machines will be in the cage locked up, and the deputy will load one in the oven, and then they'll go to Oshidji get that one, and then get the one here. And the one will be driving in the machine.
I've heard of an accident in those ballots. I mean, I'm just curious, I mean.
Well, right now, the ladies, ladies bring them.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying, is it registered pre, is it already kind of notated what the election count is prior to leaving?
They're in the little junk drives.
They probably survived.
I have a question. Isn't, isn't this number usually the same as this number?
Maybe you should assist them.
Well, I don't know why. They're transporting ballots, it seems like.
You're just thinking about.
They're, I think they're more secure coming in those cages.
Oh, I'm sure they are.
Than they have been before, especially in the winter. It's not so bad in August when the roads are dry. This is just what some of the other courts have done, so we're going to try this. The law enforcement desk work.
Do you perform another test?
We are going to, we're going to get that. Well, hoping the elevator would be fixed. Half of my machines are up here, not up in there. So, maybe the elevator will be fixed this week, and I can get my machines up here, and I just haven't been very lucky with that.
That was a little less comfortable down there.
Well, I'm going to get the machines up here, whether I have to, I don't know, have Brandon.
He'll love you for that. And I've never tried to lift them, but some of those look pretty heavy.
It's not my friend, it's my special machine down.
She's nicer than me. You ain't touched in my coffee.
I've had that thing for three years, and the steamer, blubber thing finally went out.
I'm trying to prepare. Thirty-three.
I did, but that was not as good.
Oh, well, this puppy's not weird, it's a good girl.
I think I have my business probably in the.
Oh, has it?
No.
Is it Marty's?
I don't even think she used it, I don't even know, I think.
Rarely.
Maybe.
Tony and good occasion.
I don't even think he used that. He was generally using the curing. They're so easy and so fast. Yeah, the cure is what everybody uses. Jeez, maybe Tracy was on it, of course.
That long ago? Gee.
I really think that was the last time that one got used, or. And I need a big cleaning.
It'd be some dusty Highlander drug.
Yeah.
I think I burn out coffee makers at home, and every year and a half. It doesn't matter, we drink so much coffee.
Oh, my God, you know, me too. The only way I got charging.
Oh, I love coffee.
I still, we bought one of those expensive, commercial ones, and I still like them engine better. I think the engine.
There was, there's.
I could think of that.
She's exaggerating.
Sir, any public comment?
Yeah, okay. Um, I'm, I don't know if all of you are aware of that, we, you guys wrote in to the City of Newcastle for $9,000 in January of '23 for dispatch expense. That is now a stale dated check. So, I am, I'm, I can turn it over to unclaimed property, so what is your pleasure on this? Do we turn it over and have them go after the state to get it back, or what are we doing with this check?
This is the check we wrote in lieu of the dispatch services.
Yep.
I'm assuming.
I, all I know is it's dispatch expense, and this is still a late check, and they didn't want to cash it for some reason.
From what Pam had said, if you remember, she was very willing to fight that.
So, it needs to have, isn't this the one that has part of our water and all of that connected to it?
I honestly don't know. All I know is on the check, it has general dispatch expense.
I thought you re-wrote this.
I thought it was the forty-five, sorry. I thought it was the $4,500 a month, and it was two months' worth of dispatch services.
And then they didn't want to cash it because we had come to an agreement on something else.
We already had the, the contract for dispatch services of forty-five hundred.
Because they sent us a bill for a larger amount, and we had on, we still had a contract for the forty-five hundred, and if they cashed the forty-five hundred, they were agreeing to continue with the forty-five hundred.
I think my attorney needs to wear the letter showing the address, age, and it has to do with it.
Do we need to figure out what it's for?
Well, of course, it must be that they were trying to charge us a huge amount based on calls.
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen, it's over seventeen thousand.
So, I, and should turn this over to the county attorney and have him handle this?
Well, it's up to the board, but that's fine.
I think somebody needs to reach out to the city and country, and just find a warning, like if you're not going to do something, whatever.
Well, in the claim property process, I have to send a letter of diligence to them, but, I mean, is this something that you guys want me to pursue?
You could do that.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, I can turn it over to unclaimed property, let's see if you deal with it, or.
I, I think we should let Michael send the first letter, and then, but that would prevent the board. I think the attorney needs to be, you know, whatever decision is made though.
And I think from here on out, our checks need to stay void after ninety days. We can print that right on them. Yeah, because I just talked to the lady down at the unclaimed property, she said we had, we could do it within a year, so I'm already waiting, I thought it was two years.
I make a motion to hand this over to Michael to write a letter to the city explaining our options at this point. I think we should probably with the, with the time, time limit on their response.
Well, a friendly amendment, I was going to say if we could get him with a letter by the next meeting, so that we could see a copy of what went out, so we're not stalling with it, but that's up to you and the motion.
That, I agree with that.
Second. I have a motion that's been properly seconded, any discussion?
What, so I'm just supposed to, am I supposed to hand this over to Michael, or is the board handling this over to Michael?
I would, I would say just give it to Michael.
And is he aware of the fact of what went on? I'm not aware of the fact of what went on.
Suzie, why don't you give it to me? Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean.
I would use it with Michael, and if the board's okay with that, and we can put it, if it's, instead of a timely manner, let's say put a thirty day timeframe on it, and I can ask Michael to do that.
And then after that, we can.
Yeah, do we want to go unclaimed?
Okay. Because I do have to add, ask for a holder extension since we're there for some deadline.
I'm okay with that. What does that mean exactly?
Oh, I, I missed the November first deadline to get this turned into the.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And she told me that I can, I said, well, we'll have to wait a whole nother year to do this. She said, no, you get on a website and go get a holder extension request, and they'll either accept it or deny it.
So, when you do that, do you have to wait enough, is there like a date of the month that you have to wait, or is it just after that first?
I haven't even looked at that, yeah, I think it's, but you mean, I think it's just that yearly, since we're a government agency, she told me I may have to, I could do it one year from the issue date.
Okay, so you probably do it any day after that one.
After I get the extension, yes.
And what is the holder?
Extension request, that's giving me more time since I missed the November first deadline.
Okay.
Because this got various and stuff.
Okay, I'm sure my neighbor Michael might be calling me.
Okay.
I'll try, I'll be happy to do it.
Okay.
Maybe catch him this afternoon or tomorrow.
Thank you.
Move to approve consent agenda as written.
Okay. I make a motion to hand this over to Michael to write a letter to the city regarding this payment, and give them their options, and put a thirty day deadline on their response.
Through Commissioner Todd, right?
Yes.
Do we still want Ann to have it back to the board by the next meeting for review or not?
Thirty days.
I'll just have Michael in discussion. Uh, Michael, just follow that parameter, and once they've been notified, they have the thirty days, and then we can follow this up.
Then if they cash it within that thirty days?
Yeah.
So, the motion, restated and properly seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any other public comment? Moving on to.
Hey, that's my birthday. I'm Erin Grandson, the chairman of the Natural Resources Department, asking as we're commissioned to use the sidewalks around the Public Library and Court House on the evening of their thirty-first, doing their trick or treat, and we would also like to put up a temporary story walk, so that's basically where they take the children's book and display it, so people can walk along the path where you put together, so it would be pretty short, it's only fifteen pages long, so probably eighteen words in total, with the title and a sponsor list and stuff there, so I'd keep the route to the sidewalks. I don't have an exact route planned right now, because I don't know how far apart it's going to look good, but I'll try to keep it off the grass as possible. And I brought an example of what the display will look like, so the, around eighteen pages, and just, you know, stuck in the ground.
Just a question, this is just going to be like an example of what you're going to be setting up in the parks?
Yep, yeah, so we're doing temporary ones like this, that you can just go and stick in the ground for a couple days.
Okay, cool.
So, this would be in addition to the permanent, second, we're trying to create somewhere.
All right.
So, I would also be here to set it up and take it down after the event is over, and the people of the night, because we would probably still have to try it prior to this thing, but we only get there thirteen hours.
I give motion that the natural resources that you use in the courthouse sidewalk for trick or treat on October 31st, is that the date you're doing?
Yeah.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion properly seconded, any discussion?
Okay, I have a question. Um, so, it's still okay for the people to go along and use the sidewalk though, right?
Oh, yeah, this is going to be in a, like, separate from the trick or treat, so the trick or treat is going to be the block that it really is, and then this will be just up here kind of out of the way, so it's not adding to the chaos of the trick or treat, it's going to be just in the next.
But as far as people going up and down sidewalk for trick or treat?
Yeah, it's okay for other people to, yeah, absolutely, it's not, we're not going to block off the sidewalks or anything like this.
Is there a time that you're planning on doing it?
Um, just kind of at the same time. Eighty-seven, I think, but that'll be good too, because then people start coming a little early and everything, they can kind of do that, walk around and see that, and.
I think it's a great idea, and if you need to maybe use some of the parking lot or whatever, vehicles that people have trunks are actually opening up in their outskirts side of the street.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, appreciate it.
Yay.
Do you have any additional?
I think children's tree, I'll have more stuff for the kids to do, and.
So, we were having a discussion in the way of the Mala manager.
They just had a question whether it was appropriate for a husband and wife to serve on the same board.
I can see no issue whatsoever if their husband and wife to be on the same board of a county board, I mean, they're not a quorum as a couple, you know, I mean, if that county board had five or three people, then there could be an issue, but if they're adults, they could recuse themselves from certain circumstances to avoid that. Ted, my only, have you ever seen that before?
I believe I have not seen it, but I understand what you're saying. They're not a quorum, and it's, I believe, the Mala Board is a five-member board.
Yeah.
Those are the volunteer board, right?
And they struggle to get board members.
Yeah, it's not like they have a private board member.
Yeah, I mean, there's situations like that, when you've got a husband and wife that want to do something, it may add more value to the aspect of it anyways, I mean, when they're working out together to, you know, if they're both dedicated towards it, it might help the endeavor too, you never know.
My only concern, like what you kind of brought up, if, if it gets down to three members for some reason, because some of the boards do that, sometimes they get short of members, then three is a quorum, so then it might be seen that's a problem to some people, outsiders. That'd be my only concern.
That probably wouldn't matter, it was my wife, because she disagrees with me all the time.
They're not always, they're going exactly against you.
Exactly. In a situation like that, I think potentially the county commissioners could step in and, and ask one of them to step in, and you don't really have a, I don't know, at that point, either insurance, big trouble, but hopefully we never have that issue.
Yeah, I would get, give it a try, I mean, if something comes up, then like you said, the commissioners would step in and help with it, I mean, it's worth, I don't, most people are pretty responsible about that stuff, so I don't think it would be an issue at this point. I think it'd be different if it was an elected position, but.
I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I do believe at one time there was a husband and wife on the credit board, so I don't think it's been unheard of completely, but.
Do we need a motion for it, or?
I don't think so, but while we're on Mala Board, um, I have. Let me visit the county attorney, I guess, never mind, just, just a question, I was running.
On a side note, we, that was up at Mala this weekend, and I want to commend, I'm not even sure of their names a hundred percent, but they did a really nice job, and were very attentive to the people that were there, it's extremely dry up there, but, whatever it's worth, they did a really nice job.
The Lewis's?
Who is it?
Lewis's?
The Lewis's, okay, yeah, they did a really good job up there, so that helps.
The new store, this is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs, this is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donuts, it's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
aspect of it anyways. I mean, when they're working out together to, you know, if they're both dedicated towards it, it might help the endeavor too, you never know.
My only concern, like what you kind of brought up, if, if it gets down to three members for some reason, because some of the boards do that, sometimes they get short of members, then three is a quorum. So then it might be seen as a problem to some people, outsiders. That'd be my only concern.
That probably wouldn't matter. It was my wife, but she disagrees with me all the time.
They're going exactly against you.
I would think, you know, in a situation like that, uh, I think potentially the county commissioners could step in and, and ask one of them to step in, huh? And you don't really have a, I don't know, at that point, either insurance, big trouble. Hopefully we never have that issue.
Yeah, I would get, giving it a try. I mean, if something comes up, then like you said, the commissioners would step in and help with it. I mean, it's worth, I don't, most people are pretty responsible about that stuff, so I don't think it would be an issue at this point. I think it'd be different if it was an elected position, but...
I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I do believe at one time there was a husband and wife on the credit board. So I don't think it's been unheard of completely, but...
Just go over it. I don't see an issue with it either. Do we need a motion for it or?
I don't think so. But while we're on Malla Board, um, man. Maybe it was the county attorney, I guess. Never mind. Just, just a question.
On a side note, we, that was up at Malla this weekend and I want to commend, I'm not even sure their name is a hundred percent, but they did a really nice job and were very attentive to the people that were there. It's extremely dry up there, but whatever it's worth, they did a really nice job.
The Lewis's?
Who is it?
Lewis's?
The Lewis's, okay. Yeah, they did a really good job up there, so that helps.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
Old business. How's the tip right?
I like Karen.
I'm doing fine. Waiting for the Friday rain.
I'm hoping so.
It's Thursday now too.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Show two days.
I just can't...
Maybe snowy.
I would, right now, I'd take anything we got. If it's snow, I'd like it in the bucket bowl. So it melts.
Hey!
Hey, how you doing? Long time no see.
Yeah, no kidding.
For sure.
I guess this was from your last previous request. I'll start, you correct me. Bring me your previous, the previous request. This was put back to the mapping, Max Matters. With the same results.
Yes. Did everybody receive my email I sent last week? I sent all the D's that I could find for change, any right of ways or easements, um, in and around and surrounding this road in question and Ted's property. Just so we could clarify what exactly we were looking at in the meets and bounds descriptions and Max mapped everything and most of it didn't actually pertain to this cut across road. It was Highway eighty-five south, like the gravel road going south towards the old dump or north back towards town. And just the one document that I attached, um, actually was the meets and bounds description for the cut across itself. Which, as you can see, comes short of the bridge by approximately four hundred feet or so. We both believe that it was really just an oversight at some point on the cut across road. Its purpose was to get from the old Highway eighty-five to the new one while they were still constructing the last portion of the new eighty-five into town. And so it makes sense that there's a meets and bounds description for just that short chunk. Because from the bridge to kind of the loop that goes south should have been included in the old eighty-five. Um, and it just didn't really cross over in any documents that we found and then we're left with kind of this orphaned chunk of ground that ended up being Ted's property. Solely with no easement mentioned or conveyance mentioned anywhere. So that's what we have. We've got the cut across that belongs to the county and then we've got the property that is just a continuation of Ted's and then the bridge. So we've got a couple options as to how you all want to settle access to your bridge in the way of an easement or conveyance or what have you. Bottom line is, it's gonna need survey regardless because you do not know what is going to destroy that.
I will agree totally with that. Uh, I think maybe there was paperwork at one time. What happened to it? Nobody seems to know. Because it was part of an old highway system. They can't find it, have not found it in Cheyenne. It is not here. Done clear what happened years ago. But I think with a resurvey and new paperwork, that becomes the legal paperwork for that area. That would clean the boundaries up. Uh, would clean up the easement to the bridge. It would be on the door on my side of the network.
I got a question, Ted. Is when eighty-five, the old eighty-five was the eighty-five, we just don't have any record of any, any stated easement even when it was the main highway?
And nothing from Cheyenne.
That doesn't mean it doesn't exist, but if it's, if it isn't recorded, there's no way we'll be able to find it. It could be in the desk drawer somewhere in Cheyenne, probably now.
Could be an archive. It's hard telling where it's ended up. I'm not disagreeing that there probably wasn't. But there's no record of it, so what do you go from there?
So what happens if we go down the trail of, of doing a new easement with the original, if that document ever came to surface, would that original document supersede anything that we do or would we be declaring any other previous document null and void and then and starting fresh? Would that maybe be the cleanest thing to do if we could, can we do that?
It's definitely an attorney question, but you could word the document to where it would trump a prior document.
And secondarily, um, we could use county road funds for the, probably for the, um, survey. We've done that before. But what about like width and all that? Just fun jazz when we get down to that and nuts and bolts of that because would you, would it be extending the current width of it or would it be more like a regular county road, eighty feet or whatever?
Well, I, one of your options would be probably survey. If you had a surveyor out there, do you survey all the way back to the new eighty-five if your choice was to think, if you were going to narrow that easement all the way back? That would be the time to survey it back, you know, if you wanted to go to a hundred and twenty-five feet, whatever you feel that is required. I think that you need to keep a wide enough easement through there, especially towards the bridge, uh, for maintenance. And I would not get too narrow even on the other part because it is, as of right now, I think you decided to make that a paved road. I would not, you know, uh, you go to sixty-six feet gives me more, more back. But if you keep it at a hundred and twenty-five feet, hopefully a hundred feet, a hundred and twenty-five feet, whatever you decide to do, would give you more room for maintenance and, uh, and things like that. And sixty-six feet is just not wide enough to maintain a gravel road, a long paved road.
When you go the width, when they widen that group, will that affect that, how that easement's laid out or is that what he's saying is?
I don't think so.
No, I, uh, they had originally asked for an extra construction easement on a portion of that and then later decided they didn't need that, but they were asking for a very, I like twenty foot more. Now, only for construction and then they were gonna put the fence back after, uh, after construction. I guess my only requirement is, uh, on the other part, uh, is an easement. But on the new part, I, I, I'm gonna give an easement only as long as it's the county's and I'm not selling any property. A new easement, uh, right away, only if it ever becomes not county property, uh, would be abandoned, which I would, because I own the property to the other side of the road would all be mine anyway or banned possibly back to me if it was ever abandoned or or back to the landowner.
I had a question, Ted. That section, that undefined section, more or less from the, from the Y to the bridge, has that portion of property always been in your family's possession? That, that land property? It wasn't a purchased property at one?
Yeah, oh yeah. It was purchased many, many years ago.
Okay.
This ground, if I may approach. This portion, I, I assume you're talking this portion here. Even this portion here was, uh, family property. But as eighty-five, old eighty-five come through, this portion was sold off. Because there was no, no way to get cattle over to this fifty-two acres. And so it was sold off to these, the landowner, the homeowner, something, uh, to build stuff so they could use it.
And that was still southerly of the cut across from here?
Yeah. Uh, it appears the property line starts right here and goes back to me and then this is also coming over here. Yeah, and I don't know, this highway, uh, the cut across, according to this document, looks like a nineteen sixty-four. It's a little dark and hard to read.
It's very, very hard to read, yeah. There was some documents from Gertl's to the state of Wyoming for the new highway. And I believe it had to have included the portion that is now the county's because that needed from the state of Wyoming, highway permission to Weston County for the cut across. So that's why you own just that short cut across road. So that is like your ownership. It's not an easement. It's just basically a parcel that cuts partly through Ted's property.
Taylor, the fence line's basically on this, the right of way right now.
Correct.
What about up there in that chunk close to?
Well, of course, the fence, yes. Uh, as far as I know. Typically, the DOT sets the fence within a foot in the right of way so that they have access to fix the fence.
So that's where I'm kind of going with this. If we do, I guess I don't know on county road fences. I assume, is that landowner responsibility in Weston County or?
That's a good legal question. I'm going to suggest just throw this out because it was a highway right of way. And the highway department takes care of the fence. Normally in the county, the county takes care of the fence in a right of way, but because the highway right of way, that may be a... When they needed to quit playing all the rights to that, to the county, they also needed to responsibility to the county. So anything that was, I'm going to suggest, my experience, which hasn't happened very much on this, that anything that was old highway right of way, the county's probably responsible for.
Yes, so.
Because I, you get the good with the bad, I think. I, I, but that's maybe a question for another county that's had to deal with it.
Well, I think, I'm glad you guys came in and maybe we're getting a little closer to the resolution on it. With some legal help, we can get down the right track to maybe put this, that stuff to bed and get it solved.
So is the next step survey? Is that what?
I think some legal questions need answered first and then probably a survey and what the board needs to decide is do we just want to do a short chunk? Do we want, I mean, we have like three options here. Do we resurvey the whole thing with the attention, attention of giving back seventy-five feet or so roughly on either side of that right of way to the landowner? Do we keep the right of way as it sits and then just work on a short chunk by the bridge? So I think there's, what else is there? There's something else, but also the fence issue, but I think we just need to get Michael to put some, he's probably gonna have to look in. I don't think he would, if he was sitting here right now, he probably wouldn't have answers for that.
I would agree and I, I think we talked about this or I mentioned it several times. I would keep the easement real wide at the bridge or at the present, two hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, maybe we could do that.
And back towards the intersection, hold it at Highway eighty-five, narrow it back up if that's your choice.
On that one, provide a turnaround area for vehicles, large vehicles, and we meant that something happened at that bridge and they need to turn around down there too. But, so somebody, I mean, I, I think what that needs to happen at this juncture is somebody needs to get it to Michael. What was just said here, whether that's for catwalk or?
And his coffee's there, it's sitting there.
And I would be glad to meet with anybody, you know, if we could meet with Michael to explain.
If he could set up just a timeframe to get together with him and, and you guys visited about it and?
Well, I would like to meet with a commissioner so that he's I'm just a citizen. I don't get it. Can't be a attorney, but so.
Or the chair, the chair, vice chair, I'd be up to with that. What you guys wanted to bump in there and spend a little time and?
So at this juncture, we, what your suggestion is, we get it to Michael. Do we want to keep it moving forward and put a timeframe on it to, put it on hold business for the next meeting so he can review it so that we're at least keeping the process going?
Yeah.
And we'll get within, I, I don't, I'm okay with me or him or even you or, or even Vera. I don't care. We need to meet with him, but that way he stays on it and before the next meeting and then we?
Glad, be glad just to meet with Michael, show him what we've got and, uh, because he's, you know, he was treated.
You want to just let Becky know when a good time and we'll do it this next week here where we can meet with him, what works for you? And that way we can coordinate that and keep it on the agenda.
So maybe today we could say, um, as a board, maybe push towards kind of what Ted's talking here. I don't think that that's unreasonable. And if he's willing to grant that easement on another piece of ground without, you know, a, a cost to the county, I, I think it's sensible to maybe go down that road. And it will bring more property into the, I mean, Ted will start paying taxes on more property out there.
I may lose two or three acres over here, but I may need
Yeah.
a few acres over there.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, keeping that wider at the bridge gives us a security blanket for when, whatever they decide to do there, so I agree.
It may cost you a dollar in consideration of a dollar or something. But that's how a lot of these documents are, are ten dollars.
Ten dollars.
Yeah, so just let Becky know what works for you and then we're coordinated around whatever schedule we have that works for next week.
Next week? We're talking next week, not this week.
Or you can do it this week. Just let me know.
I have a meeting this week, hospital board at five thirty. Other than that,
I'm completely unavailable this week. One of these folks might be.
I could do it probably Friday. I need signings on Friday as long as it works with Michael's schedule too.
Yeah, that's his schedule. I have nobody else.
Alright. I'll ask Cam when works for him and then I'll send it to all of you guys.
You could take cats all week, just pick a time.
Okay. Works for you. If he needs any other mapping, is there acres that have that over the across the side houses here, but Michael or?
Karen, thank you for the extra. You put a lot of effort into this.
Yeah, this is all her work.
Well, it needs solved, so.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks for that.
Thank you. Can you give me a holler?
Okay, I'm welcome. Brandon, are you ready?
Yep. No, but, but, on vacation.
Yeah, you can keep fans.
I can keep fans. It was over a hundred, it was supposed to be in the eighties. It was over a hundred and five to a hundred and ten the whole time. Everything's the same color down there. Nothing's, there's no, nothing.
It's really empty.
It is.
Where was this?
Phoenix.
Oh, God.
I lost bright lines.
Just south of town?
Just a couple miles.
Morning.
Good morning.
An architectural specialist are at the law purchase and rent avenues doors and they're gonna give me some quotes on the windows and like everything down there.
So you want to start off with this?
Sure, yeah. I'm gonna have more questions for Sean because on his bid, he doesn't have anything as far as how he's getting to the coupon. He doesn't have a lift in there, he doesn't have a, I'm not quite understanding what he's getting at. And then the Bears Home Improvement, he's wanting us to pay the eight thousand five hundred for the boom lift. And then he's also wanting like a two thousand dollar hold payment, some other stuff. Do you all, y'all read over them, any questions, I guess?
Sorry, I'm not sure a two thousand dollar deposit for something next year is?
Is feasible, right.
That's like a prepay basically for something that hasn't been rendered. I think we could do that. I mean, if he's copacetic to working with us and not having that, then?
I can call him back and work it out.
Yeah, I guess I don't know if this Bears Home Improvement, I assume they're a company that they do this kinda work.
He does painting remodels on it. For ideal work. It was just somebody I had called another painting company and the guy said he couldn't get to us. He recommended him and another company.
Okay. That makes sense, that worked. At least I have an idea.
Thanks.
So, I see strip and repaint, is that, is, was it the prep to make it so that this is?
From what he told me, there's a wash he can do from Sherwin-Williams on that tin because there may be a slight layer of silicone left from when it's previous. He said other than that, the paint from Sherwin-Williams is a direct to metal paint. Is what he told me.
And I guess my next question would be, what if any is there warranty on this? Because I don't see it on either one that says, hey, this will be good for a year or two years or whatever. It, was any mention of that brought up?
I had asked him, he obviously didn't put it in here, but when I call him back about the two thousand, I'll ask him on that as well. And I don't see the Sean thing either, either.
No, not either one, that's why I'm saying I think we should, if the board disagrees, I think we need to have that in our easement. So we have some timeframe on how long this is supposed to last.
And we determined if it is galvanized steel or mild steel or, and then we were had, we had galvanized steel discussion earlier on this, but it's not really identified as being that.
I'm not sure I can tell the difference, I guess.
Is it rusting?
No.
Okay, it's probably galvanized.
Does it look like ductwork, basically?
Looks like tin.
Yeah, it's.
Well, and I, you also see that he puts the boom in there and that's, the total project is the fifteen-five-three-zero. Here you don't see it, I'm assuming that he?
Yeah, I was wondering, I was wanting to know how Sean was getting up there because he doesn't have a lift or anything up there unless that's included in that twelve thousand.
Well, his is seventeen-eight, so. But yeah, I see laborers, spotters, painters, but I'm assuming it's in there, but it would be nice to know.
But also, I mean, I know we're considering the bids and stuff right now, but it's pretty obvious that either of which are probably considering a boom lift. We did have, if it's a one-twenty foot lift, that's appropriate, I know we were?
I talked to Bears and he came out with a rangefinder and everything and I told him we don't want anything on the sidewalk or grass or up in the building. So he used his rangefinder and he said he'll need a hundred and twenty foot boom to reach it from, to reach it from the?
Road.
Road. Or the parking lot.
Okay.
How soon would they start this if we?
Next spring.
Next spring, okay, so we have time for them to update these two bids. So if we, would you say let's put it on the next, give them time to update that?
I, I think, I mean, it may be, if there's no warranty, which it may be no warranty.
Yeah.
Or there is a year warranty or two or whatever and then, I mean, I assume you also stressed to Sean that we, there, somebody had heard came that we didn't want them on the concrete so he's aware that?
I thought I brought it up, but I will re?
You might.
I'll re-bring it up to him.
Last, last time we had a boom truck in that?
Well, yeah, they were breaking sidewalks.
You may, that may affect too, it's a bit.
And I would, you know, he may be right, they may not warranty any of it, but I would think there should be some type, even if it's a year labor and maintenance or whatever, but, you know, to repaint it every year since I'm ready, I'll say, but.
I'll bring it back up to him.
Bears isn't considering retirement anytime now.
He'll be out here, okay. He'll look you out here to me.
Just checking. So we'll put this back on, appreciate this, and then we'll move on to the elevator.
The elevator, from what I've heard while I was on vacation, you guys had made some calls, they got with them, they come in, it looks like you replaced the starter unit. From what I heard from Becky, they're supposed to be back out this week, Wednesday or Thursday, and then we'll have information.
So we didn't, and I think Becky can follow up with our conversation with him, according to him, the motor that was put in was not the correct motor. It was underpowered and then the power coming in was, the lines were heavy enough and the lines going out were not, which is why the switch was getting hot and?
Overheating.
Overheating.
Yeah.
So what, so the board's aware, so what we've asked them to do is to write a letter stating that fact that, that it wasn't the right motor.
Okay.
They're gonna put a new unit in that box and they're signing a maintenance contract, it is sixty thousand, something like that for the?
To do the whole power plant?
To do the?
It was an obsolete?
Right, it was an obsolete unit, they did put the switch in and we've got it in writing at no charge. And they will maintain it for twenty, the twenty-five years is the life expectancy of it. That includes the fluid and the lines that come into it. We asked for the letter because frankly, we want the attorney to go after the?
Rating.
The, the, the motor and the cost of that, uh, since it was put in according to these people incorrectly.
Gotcha.
And underpowered. So that's, that's what, where we're at with it and they did order the parts and they have been here several times, so we're trying to get it up and running as quickly as we can, but, um, that's, that's where we're at with it.
Okay, do you have help?
Well, I mean, it was, it wasn't a lot we could do or we would've been waiting, so it wasn't that we were trying to go around you, it was more, we have a problem, we have to fix.
Right, I understand, yeah.
All right. Any questions? Eric, have there updates to that? Beargrounds, you guys asked about the roof and that door? Okay.
So, um, I guess it was back in the spring, you guys, the board presented you some bids from SNS Builders. I reached out to them because they didn't have it IMI'd, so that they could IMI'd it so I could get you the, that price for the couple items that you were after and it's the roof and the door, which you, which you had asked about. So for the door, they're looking at a full replacement, the door was, the hinges have been compromised, they're been pulled from when it got sprung, they're gonna reverse the door also so that it doesn't catch the rip down the wing, which is what the problem was, it caught the wing and ripped it open. So they'll replace the whole door, flip it. That bid from them is ninety-five hundred dollars. The roof leak, Brandon and I teamed up and finally isolated exactly where the roof leak is. It came out, we spent, spent it a little over an hour. An hour out there and I dumped about a hundred gallons of water on the roof with the hose trying to get it to show up. And it finally did just before we gave up. But it was the hot water roofing, hot water heater roofing is what's leaking, the, it's coming back in somehow, there's so much caulking and everything up on that roof that I don't see anything leaking on the roof, but it's working its way back in somehow and it's coming out the hole in the roof and ripping down through the insulation as well. SNS also looked at that and if they get both jobs at the same time, I don't want to say that they're gonna or whatever, it'd be six hundred and fifty to fix it, otherwise thirteen hundred if they gotta come back at a separate time just because of the additional travel. And I currently have another guy right now over there writing up an estimate for it that I can get to you guys, you know, where you can compare that, their, their estimate.
And again, we've been kinda talking about warranties, so if they do the work, do they warranty that work or?
You know, with it being a, a repeat, repeat install, I, you know, I can't say what kind of warranty they're gonna give you. I, I discussed that with them, you know, with all the issues that the building has, like, you know, if he hasn't guaranteed anything.
So if that's not the leak, then?
Oh, it's the leak I found, I put my hand in the hole and pushed down and the water come in, so I, I mean, that's pretty much the leak, it's right above the hole and, you know, all lines up.
There's no water coming anywhere else.
Lines up with all the other circumstantial evidence.
What I'm saying though is, is they fixed the leak and it still leaks in that spot, then are they going to charge us again to come out and fix the leak or is it?
I guess if, if it ends up being a different source of a leak, then yeah, they probably charge you again, but if it's, they're fixed, doesn't fix it, like I would suppose if they, I mean, I can look into that for sure and find out.
What kind of roof steel's on it?
What's that?
What kind of roof steel's on it?
What brand?
Is it corrugated?
No, it's, it's flat. It's flat, it's a seamless, you know, with the ridges that lock in, so it's hidden fastener style. Or it's actually not hidden fastener, that one has, it has, it is, um?
So it has a membrane?
It is corrugated. It's, it's your standard.
Like barn steel.
Yeah, it's your barn.
So worst case scenario, if they have to pull out a sheet and put a new sheet in, I mean, I would assume once they pull the boot and put a new boot on there is probably what they're going to do.
Right, that's what I would expect.
Is it currently a rubber boot, like you usually use on?
No, it's, it's a little different creature. It, it's, it's for the hot, the instant on-demand hot water heater, so it's not a boot that you normally would see that flares over the hole. There could be part, the, the roof jack comes up and it's, part of it is molded, so it provides some of that. But then there's, it looks like through all the caulking, it looks like there is a membrane put down and then some, some kind of mesh on top of that to kinda push down on that and then the caulking is over that. So it's, it's kind of, it's, I've never seen any of that, but, um, that's what I think is happening, is that memory or, is it, it's gotten torn or something to that effect from the smush factor, as best I can tell without, you know, getting up there.
The PVC?
The exhaust vent.
The exhaust vent, yes.
It's, it's a plastic, it's not necessarily, that I can tell.
So they could use a, just a rubber, regular rubber boot?
They could go back over that if they chose to do that, right? Or expanded boot and, you know, cover that greater area. I'm not sure.
I think if, I mean, if there's the steel damage around that, it should be able to fix it right there.
I, I think it's just the application of the, whatever boot or seal system they have there is in compromise.
Yeah.
The metal is fine, there's no tears in it, there's no damage to it, no hail.
What's, what's you looking at?
The, the door is the main entrance, double door?
No, no, it's the side kitchen door.
Side kitchen, okay.
And it's hinges are pulled, I mean angled from the inside where they bracket into the frame and they're definitely bent.
And wasn't there a wall that got hit out there, did that get fixed?
That's not fixed, that's, was, in, in the bid also and I've also done other bids, I'm talking to Brandon, I, I mean, I can fix it if I got the metal, I've got a whole other company that makes the building for like five hundred bucks.
Have to go to Gary and you pick it up?
Yeah, go to Gary Nebraska to pick up the metal and then the install, based upon what SNS said, they don't believe there's any structural damage behind it, so it's a matter of just replacing panels and maybe popping the roof, probably gonna have to pop the gutter off that section because they screwed this tin behind the gutter.
Soft fit, probably.
Yeah, it's soft fit, so. But, um, I did have, the barn got hit by a car that, that we caught and we got a bid on that, it was like five sheets of metal to fix that and re-secury at the bottom and the local contractor gave me a bid for that for sixteen hundred dollars. We're looking at five panels for that as well, uh, and then just reattaching it, um, so I would assume that if we wanted a bid for that specifically, the sixteen hundred would probably be in the ballpark for that as well. It's pretty much apples to apples.
Be nice to get all those issues prepared, if I would.
And all three of those, I have, were in that twenty thousand dollar bid that SNS put in back in the spring and there were some other things in there as well.
I wonder if you guys got some old railroad ties, those concrete railroad ties from the railroad or something to?
Yeah, and then there was an oversight, I think, when they did put the curb stops or something to protect the building from getting run into.
Yeah.
That's an option to look into, is some kind of curb stop for the vehicles, you know, get a little creative maybe with it.
Special board, do we need a motion if they're doing any of that or what are we?
I think, uh, let's go into discussion, this discussion after the meeting and then we can, maybe nail some of that out, right? And move forward. We need to get it done, but, how about, how about the, the roof, we get fixed, I mean, well, they, I guess they're on both of them, aren't they?
Yeah, that's?
Six fifty if they do both.
Right, right. And I'll have that other estimate today, he's there now, but I won't, by the time you guys get out of here.
Only issue with that roof, I mean, if they use Lexel or something that they can seal it, it's cold, I suppose, on the roof. Should be one day between now and December, hopefully.
You'd think so. Were they not there yet?
Maybe wait until this other estimate comes in and then next meeting, we can discuss this afterwards here and then pull, pull it in.
So we'll move this to the workshop and then we'll, we'll get back to you before the next meeting and come up with, because it sounds like the roof and that door, all that repair can be done in one, so.
And then maybe if, in the meantime, you could email Becky the estimate that you did.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and when we're doing these bids, even for here, I mean, I would, let's make a point to ask what type?
The warranty?
If any warranty we would have, so that we have something to go back on and maybe there is, like Commissioner God's said, but at least we know that, we don't have to chase them down, we cover ourselves here in the county on any financial responsibility with the warranty and work performance. Yeah, exactly.
And what did you think on that, this deal for the side of Dylan? What did you think it cost?
Based on the other estimate that I just got, sixteen hundred dollars plus five hundred for the materials. Well, that would include the materials.
Okay.
He charged me for the materials on the last one, so.
That would go to Gary and get it and everything?
No, well, going to Gary, that might be out of travel or we'd have to have it shipped or something, like, we'd have, we'd work out there with the stars that are going to get it, but the, this job here that he's gonna do, he's gonna provide the metal from his source, it's not gonna be an exact match because of the age of that barn. But this metal would be an exact match, other than slight color fade because of the years and it's, it's close.
Do we know what the shipping would cost or?
Uh, I had asked, it was kinda spendy.
Either way, going to get it or not, it's gonna?
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, if I haul, if I drove down to get it, it'd be my wages and fuel to get it versus paying somebody else's fuel and making a profit off of it, so.
Right.
I mean, that's the difference there. I don't know if I have a, I might have a Nebraska bird hunt trip in my plans anyway, so.
We'll, uh, talk about it at the workshop and then we'll get back to you this week and work it out.
And if you want me to get you shipping costs, I can do that for you.
It'd be good to know, just the general idea. Okay. Thank you.
Very much.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Commissioner Todd, do you have a comment?
Let's see if Drew's on first.
Morning Drew. Can you hear us?
Good morning, Chris. Yes, I can. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, the floor is all yours.
Thank you. And Becky, I think Jeannie's waiting to get in. If you could admit her, if you see her, that'd be great. I do have several quick updates for you this morning, commissioners. But let's start with the Newcastle BLM. Commissioner Todd, I think you probably got the invite that the cooperating agencies are meeting with BLM Monday morning at, I believe, nine o'clock, October 21st. And that will be to go over, I think, uh, the response to comment. Then they're gonna lay out, I believe, a timeframe in which we're going to see the draft EIS. I think it's gonna be later this month, the first part of November, and we'll have 90 days to comment on that draft. So I just wanted to make sure that you got that and if there's any questions on Newcastle.
No.
Okay. So let's move on to Thunder Basin. So we did have a Thunder Basin National Grassland Working Group meeting in September. And, uh, the bottom line is this. So the acreage numbers that came out in mapping is that we do have slightly over 10,000 acres of colonies identified, which is growing at a very, very slow rate. As you remember, 10,000 was kind of our cutoff to start treating actively. However, the Forest Service has no money, so they have been cut across the board and are moving positions. And so the concern with implementation was, the discussion with, um, Rob Robertson. We don't have the funding to really be aggressive. If you want to be aggressive this year, we can do that. But then you're not gonna have the funding next year if we have an extension. We're not growing at a very fast rate, which is true. From last week, last year to this year, they did not grow significantly. They were like just under 10,000 last year and just over 10,000 this year. So I think the compromise that we came to is for this year for treatment, we're gonna look at collapsing burrows, which is a lot cheaper and maybe an in-between implementation compromise. And we'll see where that takes us. So I think we're going to have another meeting in January, January 14th of 2025 to see if we're seeing any significant changes because we still will be in the treatment window at that point in time. And we can make different decisions. But right now with all the information that we gathered, this was kind of the direction that the whole working group decided to go. So that is where we are at. Are there any questions on Thunder Basin?
Nope. No, there isn't.
Okay. Black Hills, we're kind of in a holding pattern right now. Again, there were significant budget cuts. So they are laying some temporary workers off, mainly interim-type workers. And so MICA has, at WCCA, we have our second round of NEPA training this week in Pinedale. And the new forest supervisor from the Black Hills will be there, Sean Cochran. I have not met him yet. So it's gonna be a great opportunity for us to be able to meet with Sean, introduce ourselves, and talk a little bit about the Black Hills. So other than that, I have no updates on when we're gonna see the notice of intent or the scoping. We're kind of waiting for NOGA to get done. So as far as NOGA is concerned, we did submit, um, comments and you submitted comments for Weston County on old growth. And now we're working with the Forest Service in the interim as cooperating agencies. Before the final comes out, we do have a meeting as cooperating agencies next, uh, the 24th. Um, and it will be with high-up leadership in the Forest Service to talk about a few things that were important to Wyoming. So we will be discussing those. And at this point in time, if all remains the same, we're expecting a final EIS probably around the first part of December with a rod in January. So if nothing changes, I suspect that we'll be protesting. If there's things that we can come to agreement on between now and then, we'll reassess that. But still working on it. It's still not perfect. We still don't like it. We wish they leave the old growth decisions on how we're gonna manage those and where we're gonna manage those to the supervisor level and the forest unit level. We think that that's more appropriate. Um, but we're still in those negotiations. So are there any questions on Black Hills or NOGA?
No questions at this time, Drew.
Okay, thank you. Um, sage grouse. So we were expecting the sage grouse final EIS to come out, um, two weeks ago. And we were notified by DC that it's gonna be delayed, which they told us absolutely no extensions and now they're delaying it. So the, the last I heard from the state leadership team is that the final is gonna be delayed into December or the first part of the year, which tells me maybe we made some traction on some of our arguments, um, for fatal flaws or legal challenges. But they are going back and they're going to be revising some things. So that has been delayed. I'll let you know when I hear that it's gonna come up, but it's not gonna be October and probably not November. Are there any questions on sage grouse?
Drew, do you have any feel for the Wyoming Game and Fish department on that, that aspect of their, their view on this whole progress of sage grouse?
We work very closely with the Game and Fish because they are the leads for the state. And, um, MICA and I for WCCA actually participate every Friday in a meeting with all the state agencies led by Game and Fish. So we are coordinating very closely. There are some outstanding things that we just have not come to terms with. One of them being adaptive management and allowing our Wyoming Game and Fish to take the lead on corrective actions. So if we don't see some changes regarding the language and adaptive management, I suspect that could be an item that we just agree to disagree on. Uh, and there's a few others. One of the things for the Northeast that is, is being discussed at this point is some of the fires that happened over in Johnson and Campbell County. Really on private surface this, this past couple months, hit a rather large black area core area, um, that is being managed. And so we're looking at how are we treating all of that, looking at the damage that the fires have caused, whatever corrective action that we need to take. That's even outside of, of this land amendment. That's even with Siget and others. So I honestly, Commissioner, I think we just need to see the language based on our comments. See if there was any changes or remove the needle. And if there wasn't, we have the ability to protest. But we're working closely with Game and Fish.
Yeah, okay. I just, I caught wind, but maybe they canceled the hunting season on them this year. And whether that's accurate or not, I'm not a hundred percent certain. But I didn't know that those fires and, and some of the other aspects had something to do with their move in that direction. But it didn't necessarily feel like it was a positive move in the direction that for them to go down that road and us trying to have state control over it. And, and maybe it would work positively if they can prove to the federal system that we are, our statement, our state is in the game of trying to manage it as, as well. But that's just interesting.
I, I thought they did have the hunting season, Commissioner. I thought it was in early September.
I thought it was too, but I'd heard that they canceled it. Uh, I don't know.
I don't think they did because we talked about it in a meeting.
Okay.
And so if they canceled it in some areas, I don't think they canceled it statewide.
Okay.
Exactly.
Could be, yeah. I'll, I'll do more research.
Okay. Um, then I just have a couple of quick updates for you just for informational purposes. These are, so on the Rock Springs R and P, we did file a protest and, uh, Weston County was included in that protest along with Crook, Naya Carrera, Campbell, and Converse. Becky, thank you for getting all that information together. And it really was to just support, um, the five Southwest counties that are involved and also the deviner's office. So thank you for agreeing to be a part of that. Uh, we also just protested on, on me on behalf of Campbell and Converse. We did just protest the solar final EIS. And there were some areas that were identified by BLM as solar allocation in Converse and in limited in Campbell. But most, we have mostly private surface. So the effects of this really were in Southwest Wyoming and the Big Horn Basin. But we did protest and just so you know, our biggest concern is, is that they're doing these really big, broad-based west-wide EISs for land allocation. And we just think that's inappropriate. If we want to look at solar allocation, we need to look at that in, in relation to all of the other multiple uses in our natural resources in that area. For example, when they looked at solar allocation in Southwest Wyoming, they originally put it right over the top of a migration corridor. It's not the appropriate level to be looking at that. And then also, if you have land set aside for solar, you're taking it off the table possibly for oil and gas, for mining, for agriculture, et cetera. So we think it's the wrong place to be doing that kind of planning was one of our major problems. And then of course consistency with, um, county plans and some other things. So we did protest that. We'll see what they say. We haven't been very successful on everything else, so I doubt if we caught traction on that either. The last thing I would tell you, which is a huge blow, is the protest that we filed for Campbell and Converse and Johnson Counties for coal leasing in the Buffalo Field Office area, we were denied on every instance by the BLM. So we'll be going to court. So that's kind of where we're headed. And we'll see what the administration, we'll see what administration we're gonna have in 2025 after the election. And we're either gonna have more of this and we're gonna have a lot of litigation, or we're gonna be really busy trying to unravel some of these things. So it's just gonna depend. But, um, there, there's a lot of things out there that cumulatively, it's kind of a mess for us. So with that, commissioners, that concludes my report. Do you have anything additional for me?
Nope, not at this time, Drew. We appreciate all your efforts very much. Thank you. And hopefully it'll.
Sorry, it wasn't more cheerful.
No, hopefully it'll get easier. I doubt it, but, all right, thank you.
I hope so. Thank you, commissioners. I, as always, we appreciate your support.
Thanks, Drew.
Thanks, Drew.
All right, see ya.
All right, so we're back to old business. Uh, you had a comment, Commissioner?
Yeah, uh, let's start with the old 85 resolution. I think there's some misunderstanding in the community after receiving three or four phone calls in the last week. The old 85, uh, speed limit setting was completely done by the Weston County Commissioners. It wasn't done by the Wyoming Highway Department, nor was it done by T-Squared. All they are is an avenue for us to use to try to set a speed limit on those roads. And, um, the calls that I got, a couple of people were upset at various levels of the state that it had been insinuated that they were the reason for that speed limit to be set at that rate. And it was us who set that speed limit at that rate, not, all we were doing was looking for recommendations. And I mean, we could have not done it, but we did do it. And mostly for, uh, just to try to slow people down a little bit, I guess. So I thought I was clearing anything up, anybody that may have that misunderstanding. And secondarily, on 2410, I want to caution this board on discussing things with, uh, news organizations and Garrett, this is absolutely nothing to do. I'm not trying to, I'm, I'm happy that you reached out. But the gentleman didn't bother reaching out to anybody else that I'm aware of. Or he reached out to me, but never called me back when I called him, him back on his Cowboy State Daily Report. That is Garrett Borden's opinion on the matter and certainly not a hold of this board. And I think those guys, some of those organizations have a terrible way of not conveying that in their message to the state. And what they're trying to portray is what's actually happening here in Weston County, so.
I wanted to answer your question. A gentleman did reach out, but it was after he had talked to them. So I don't know if any of those comments are gonna even make it in there. I didn't get back to him until later, but he did call.
It's already been, oh, so, I mean, it's, I just say, you know, this is, and Garrett, very well, my, I've said, you know, in my opinion, not the board's opinion. I mean, you know, the guy's gotta be cautious with him, suckers. So figure out ways to do whatever.
Did, did you mention that I reached out to them?
Oh, I don't know. He, he, I just saw the, the, you were the only one quoted from our board in the entire article. And I got an email from him, reached out to him. He never called me back.
I did reach out a little. I received a call from him.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's unfortunate, but.
Okay, so we did this speed limit comment right there. Um, new business, we don't have anything, so we're gonna go right to Newcastle Chamber of Commerce, Jennifer.
Hello.
Hello.
And Henry.
And you. Morning.
Good morning. Can we see him sit?
You can sit.
Hi, I wanted to come introduce myself. I have been for the community since 2017. And my husband works at the BLM. And, um, you know, I've been involved in, you know, different things with, you know, kids' boards and, you know, church and all that different stuff. And so, um, I finally get to, you know, come out and actually work with people in the community professionally. And I've had so much fun just being able to connect with everybody. And the board is actually, um, you know, just like any other business, we have ups and downs. And we've had some, some downs in the past, but the board that we have on there now. And then we have some upcoming people that are, you know, trying to join like Ashley Tepper and, um, you know, a few others. But they all really, really want to make some changes and they want this, they've listened to what the businesses are saying and they want, you know, they still want to be a part of doing community activities, but they really, really want to help promote the businesses and, and actually, you know, make a, make a difference and make it something they're proud of. So I'm excited to be working with all of them. And, um, I have been communicating with the Upton Chamber of Commerce. And we're talking about getting together because they've got some amazing things going on there. Like people have been talking about them nonstop. And so, um, we're making plans to kind of meet up with them and, um, so yeah, we've got some great changes coming up and, you know, we're really excited. Yeah, we just had a, you know, and we want to stay open communication with you guys too. So I'm always open. We have a chamber actually open now between a volunteer and myself, between Monday through Friday, 10 to 2. So, and I know that was a problem before, it's having it open so that when people were coming through, they could, you know, or getting somebody on the phone and stuff like that. So if anybody ever has like any suggestions or questions or anything like that, you know, I would love to be able to look with you guys as much as possible, so.
Well, I think the businesses will appreciate the enthusiasm and always welcome to new ideas, so welcome.
Thank you very much.
Welcome and thank you. I'm excited to, your enthusiasm and ambitions are, are, I'm looking forward to having that. After that conversation we had the other day, Jennifer, also that sign, um, might be worth a little research in finding. I know that that, the upper portion was an advertisement for, uh, I think it said Newcastle Area Chamber of Commerce. It might've had something to do with Travel Center up there.
Talking about that sign that's between Pinnacle Bank and ours, it's kind of a little faded and there's some things you can't read. And we're talking about meeting up with the, um, we believe that's owned by Pinnacle Bank and kind of revamping it so you can actually see it.
Oh, that's like a really big one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's some of those signs on there. They're just illegible. You can't even see. But revamping that up and using that and, um, talking about getting some quotes on, uh, a new skin for the board out there, um, coming into town. And actually having a lot of like the actual businesses on there on the chamber and promoting what they do and, um, but I'm going to be meeting with the Wyoming Travel Commission too. They have a meeting coming up. And they've been actually doing a lot of things with Upton as far as, um, when they have new, um, things that they're putting on, like they just put on, on Oktoberfest. They're actually willing to help with that. So they'll be talking to them about, you know, signs updated and activities and, you know, getting some traffic going through here and, you know. So, and we've got a great, great new production company on there. They're professional video production. I don't know if you guys have seen, they've done work for Ashley Tepper's office. It's Ponderosa Hills Production. And we've been kind of talking with them about, um, And we've been kind of talking with them about, um, getting actual like, uh, like video to kind of get traffic back through here as far as Sturgis goes and during tourist season. So they're going to get us a quote on that to kind of show like, almost like a motorcycle perspective of what you would see if you took the other route, because there's multiple routes they can go. And so if we can get them to come back through here and, you know, spend their money and make this a place, a destination place instead of just a stop through is what we really, really want to do and, you know. And I think just, I think Newcastle's history itself sells this town. And, um, I talked to Lucas Keeler yesterday about joining up with the Historical Society and kind of promoting all that, just, um, meeting with, um, I'm so bad, Darren Downs. He took me through his whole building. He was showing me the mine chaps. And, you know, he's got the original doggy ticket from nineteen fifty-one when it opened and all that different stuff. I think there's so much stuff that that Newcastle can sell just because I know people love the history of this area anyway. And I feel like we're still, you know, kind of like a frozen in town time where we've just got this awesome culture that, you know. And so if we can get our businesses to make money off that and, you know, keep our, you know, keep our town the way it is, but still be able to have it thriving, I think. Joining with like the county commissioners, the Historical Society, all these different places, I think it's just going to be awesome. So I'm really excited for all these changes that are coming up. And the people that are actually are on the board are really, really listening and wanting to make things good and make it something that people are proud to be part of, so.
Excellent. Thank you for coming in.
Absolutely. And please reach out anytime you guys have, I mean, even if it's constructive criticism, just be nice. If it's ideas, whatever, I'm always, I would love to work with you guys as much as possible, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Well, you're a good man, Hunter. He's a good guy.
Yeah, he really is. He's he's been the backbone keeping this thing going.
Yeah.
So it's been nice having him kind of tell me the ropes. Yeah, he's good. So.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah. He just donated a whole bathroom to, by the way. So we're getting a whole revamp.
Wow.
So Second Amendments, we got new toilet, new vanity, everything. And we're going to have like a little open house because I would say ninety percent of the people that come through. I didn't realize how much the Chamber of Commerce is actually utilized, but they come in and they use the restroom and they want to know where should I go eat? Where should I stay? You know, how do I get here? How do I get there? So having that face of Newcastle and making it professional and everything is really important. So we got to give a big shout out to him for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Back to public comments. Is there any public comment?
Big crowd.
Commissioner's comment. Commissioner, uh, anything?
Yes.
It's dry out there. We spent a couple days up at mammal camp last weekend, hoping to get some riding. And one day we did go, but my goodness, it's dry. Just just the tire contact of the trails is exposing the air. A lot of activity this week with homecoming. Going to be a lot of kiddos and parents outrunning around prepping quotes and things like that for the weekend, so.
No comment for me? Thank you. Um, what time are we coming back for the workshop or do we want to come back or are we going right into it?
Let's do a bathroom break and then do it.
Yeah, that's good. So we'll adjourn the commissioners' meeting. Thank you for everyone that attended. Commissioner meeting adjourned.
Again, I respect him coming into the lion's den. Weston County is notoriously conservative. And JD came in and stood at the front of a room where he knew he was in the minority and took questions, which is better than I can say for others from from that wing of the party. That's my my problem. So so, you know, Chip not getting a chance to respond, hey, through no fault of our own or no fault of the Freedom Caucus, because the Freedom Caucus shows up, they've kind of had the stage to themselves. But for JD Williams to do something that that, sorry, that, you know, Ogden wouldn't do, um, you know, Liz Cheney wouldn't do, I mean, who he gets lumped in with. He came, he came right up and and he saw people and he talked to people.